You are ready to go.
All right, I am calling to order the special meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 6:32 PM. We're doing this remote via Microsoft Teams. Tim, I'll turn it over to you for review of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin with the Planning Department. David Brooks, Plan Director, is also here this evening, as well as Brian Vincent, the City Engineer. I just have a few opening remarks to make relative to our meeting online this evening. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Urgency Order Number 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with the Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the Planning Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebaninnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the May 18th, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, we ask that all speakers identify themselves and spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we do ask that all board members and staff please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press *6 to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebaninnh.gov. Again, that's planning@lebaninnh.gov. Or use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of the problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and serious technical difficulties such that we are unable to hold the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date. Please note that the public hearing tonight will be continued to the June 8th, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board. Continuing the application will allow for additional public testimony in the event that anyone is unable to access the meeting. For anyone who would like to provide testimony but could not as a result of technical difficulties in accessing this evening's meeting, please send your questions or comments on the proposed project by email to planning@lebaninnh.gov. For additional information, please call the Planning and Development Department at 603-448-1457. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. That goes for board members and participants alike. Finally, note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website, lebaninnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim. So I'm now going to proceed with a roll call. Before that, I will just mention we have two members, Matt Hall and Gregorio, who have recused themselves. And unfortunately, I regret to tell you that we have lost a board member. Matt Cole is not only leaving the board, but he's leaving Lebanon altogether to seek a new job. And I regret that because we were just getting to know him. So with that, I will ask each of you just to tell us whether you're in attendance and whether you're alone. This is Bruce Garland, and I'm alone. Jim?
Counselor Jim Winnie is present and alone.
Thank you. And Joan?
Joan Monroe is here and alone.
Thank you. Laurel?
Laurel is present and alone.
Thank you. Kathy?
Kathy is here and alone.
Thank you. Sarah? Maybe Sarah's having muting problems. And Tom?
Tom is here and alone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is David Brooks. I believe Gregorio Amaro is on the call. He is muted at the moment.
All right, but he's still recused.
I think he did last time. Yes, that's correct.
Right. So, and Sarah? Still, I spoke with Sarah. I know she's intending to be here, so hopefully she'd be able to come into the meeting. All right, as Tim said, we are here solely to review this large project from Dartmouth College, but not to make any decisions this evening. We've got a lot of material to go through, so let me outline the program that we're going to follow in order to do so. First of all, I'm going to ask the applicant to discuss five new plan sheets that were included in the latest package that we got this week. I will then ask staff to make their comments. Thirdly, we'll go back to the review of the project that we started last time on 4/27 and just talk and answer questions that we may have. Fourthly, I know at least one person did a site visit between the last meeting and this meeting, so give an opportunity for any member who did site visits to make known their observations to the members. Fifthly, we'll review the impact study. And I have to tell you that this one will take a little time just to explain to you where the bits and pieces are. This is a little bit scattered in the documentation we have, so when we get there, I will go through that. And it includes one document that was also received in this week's package, or the package that we got last week, I guess. So we'll go through all of those points. Sixthly, we'll talk about traffic. Seventh, we'll talk about the conditional use permit. Eighth, we'll talk about waivers. Again, we're talking about these. We're not putting any of them to votes tonight. And ninthly, hopefully, we still have some time to open it to public comments and questions. So that is a long agenda. Before I ask the applicant to start it off, does anybody have any questions? All right, I'm not hearing anyone, so I'll ask the applicant to please review the five site plans that are included in this meeting's package.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Christina Wagon. I'm a Vice President with the Michaels Organization, here to present our presentation. Just wanted to share who's present here from the development team. Besides myself, we have Daniel Justineski from Dartmouth College. We have Dave Fensdamerker, Steve Hock, Eric Bednarik, Jason Plordy from BHB, a civil engineer. We have Mark Muller from JSA, the architect. We have Mark Fogary. He's from Fogary Planning, who did the fiscal impact analysis. And we also have Phil Hastings from CWB, who is our land use council. So we wanted to thank you for this special meeting and this opportunity to review the new cement. So I'm going to hand this over to Dave Fensdamerker from BHB.
Thank you. Perhaps you could email that list to the Planning Board, the Planning Staff, unless they already have it, for the benefit of our Recording Secretary.
Sure. I believe we sent it over for the invitation, but we will send it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Good evening, Board. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, it's Dave Fensdamerker from VHB. So Bruce, you went through an agenda. I think ours lines up with it because I spoke to Tim, but just real quick, we're going to go through those new plans that we submitted, and then we'll walk through the other pieces as you lined out. I won't double up on the presentation.
Thank you.
But just to focus on the new plans that we submitted, I marked this one up a little bit, but some of the good feedback that we got was the concerns with the parking, particularly along the Building 2 perimeter, and the ability to potentially there enhance the landscaping buffer between the parking lot and the roadway. And then there was also conversations about, you know, our conditional use, potentially banking parking versus building it all now. So the new plans I submitted, the LM plans, I think I did 3.0 and maybe 3.1 and 3.3. But this is an overview of the whole parking plan, and what we focused on was taking away the 25 spaces that were along Mount Support Road. And these were some where the headlights would be facing towards Mount Support, and then flipping those over to the Spine Road. And really, the idea here is just to bank them. I think everyone's in agreement that we don't want to build all the spaces that we're looking for, but we also don't want to put the Michaels Organization in a position where they can't lease rooms because there's not enough parking. So it's really the focus of making sure we have enough parking, but balancing it with, you know, some of the concerns that the board and staff had related to the parking on the perimeter. So those landscape plans focused on that. We had some blowups. I will say that we received comments already back related to the storage area being along that perimeter. And so what we've done, we have comments, you know, from today even that what we're going to do is pull that snow storage out so that we don't have it along the frontage, and we're going to update the landscaping plan to... We had some plantings down by the road, but we're going to take this time to bring some plants, add some plants to that are up at the level of the parking lot as well. So I'll have our landscape architect go through that when we get those. Oh, and here we are. So the other plans were the updated landscape plans, and I think what these focused on was previously, we were utilizing a lot of the existing trees, but what we did is refocused our attention on planting some trees. And I'd like to introduce Eric Bednarik, who is our landscape architect, to speak on this.
Thanks, Dave. Again, Eric Bednarik, landscape architect with VHB. And so what we've done in replacement of those spaces that were removed, we are adding some landscape planting strips along the parking lot. And those would be primarily focused and designed so that we can also add snow there, but also locate the shrubs that are far enough away from the parking so that those plants won't necessarily get impacted by the snow. And we'll also be smart about what type of plants we'll use, from snow and herbal. Nature. I think it's better now. Don't know what's happening. Okay. So we utilize the right species in here that will be durable for snow and salt management, and at the same time try to focus on also providing plants that will minimize impact for car lights and so forth, and just to soften the parking lot as well. And that highlights that particular enhancement of landscape.
Eric, just want to talk a little bit about... Eric, why don't you mute?
We're getting a lot of feedback, guys. All right.
Sorry, I had Eric mute. And then, yeah, just beyond that is the improvements to the landscaping along the whole frontage where we're planting and providing the calculations to show that we're providing the appropriate perimeter landscaping as required. So I think it's going to give a nice corridor there as we come down Mount Support. Then the last one we want to talk about is the open space plan. I know before we had given some general ideas. This was something that the team went back to Dartmouth College, and what we're showing here is 15% of dedication. We're dedicating, you know, portions of the wildlife corridor and really focusing in on, I know that the pond that people noticed on that sidewalk before, and dedicating that area as well. So what we have here is, you know, eight acres of open space dedicated, and I think this, and this meets the 15% requirement per the subdivisions requirements. So that's an overview of those spaces, of those sheets that were submitted in the last two weeks, and I'll pass it back to you, Bruce.
Thank you. Any questions from board members of these five documents?
This is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
I find it difficult in looking at these plans not to have the ponds and the streams that are up above the meadow actually outlined on the plans anywhere because they're significant. And all we kind of see are little dots and dashes for the extent of the wetlands, but they don't really point out where those actual bodies of water are. It would be helpful to see them. And then the second question would be, in dedicating the open space, which says it's for active or passive recreation, it is actually a large part of it, the wildlife corridor. And so I just had a question about whether identifying the wildlife corridor as open space was for the benefit of access of the public to get back into the property. Is it harmful for the wildlife to have, you know, access to that corridor for people? A little bit more information on that would be helpful.
So this is Christina with Michaels. The intent for dedicating that area for open space was for passive use, so the idea would be to restrict any future development activities. So the idea is it would be protecting the wildlife. It wouldn't be for access for the public to come trapse around in that area.
But if it's passive recreation, wouldn't that be inviting people into that area?
I don't believe that is the intent. The intent is to restrict development for many activities happening in that area.
Mr. Chair? Yes?
Mr. Chair, Monroe here.
Yes, Joan.
I have related questions to this.
Okay.
And my questions were, I was trying to understand, I understand about the corridor, and it shows on the map, I'm looking at the new information, I guess it's EXH1. It's the first one of the maps in our packet from tonight. Right, thank you.
Correct.
And I understand about the corridor beginning at the road and then sort of going straight into the back part of the property. And it's also going right along, is it going along the existing tree line, or is the tree line going to be moved farther to the south?
Well, we want to be disarming the tree line.
Yeah, the tree line is set and is not moving. The tree line's pretty much up against the property line. The rest is sort of that meadow out there, so that's what's going to be the majority of the open space.
Okay. And I'm led to understand that that's connecting, that this thin strip is connecting with a wider strip on the budding property to the south?
Yes.
Okay. And I have the same concern that Kathy just voiced in that that large area is sort of the only place where people could walk their dogs or, in the winter, maybe ski. It's an awkward situation because ideally, one doesn't want to have people in a place that is being used by wildlife. I guess I have the same concern that Kathy does, and that sort of, I don't know how you'll designate that to the residents. And it's not that they can go there, but it's the kind of thing where, like, you wouldn't want to have a bad mitten game there, or, you know, or any kinds of lawn games there on a regular basis. I don't know if there's enough space within the four buildings. Is there enough space in there that that sort of thing would be done in the middle of the development?
So a bad mitten game or a football game, that is an active use. And we have areas that are programmed around the community building for that. And then you also have the open space between the buildings for that. We also have the bike trail that we're allowing to go through from the mountain biking trail. So those are more active uses, and they'll be good for on the site.
Okay. And what do you consider to be the, where is the mountain bike trail?
Dave, do you have one where it's more zoomed in? It kind of meanders just south of the internal wetland. He's pulling up one. It actually comes from the, I guess it's the east.
Oh, it sounds like it as well. The orange is the paths. The orange on here is the mountain bike trails.
I see. Okay.
So it's the existing trail. We're just continuing it and allowing the access there when we're going to improve it, so it could continue to go where it was.
Okay, I see. It's using the existing woods roads that are in there.
Correct.
Okay, got it. And... I was wondering why, I realize that, you know, that your requirements are only 15%, but I was wondering, you know, why, I mean, why not more? Why not include the whole wetland? I mean, surely it's not an area that would be, could be developed in the future.
Yeah, Phil, if you want to?
Yes, this is Philip Hastings with Cleveland Waters and Bass. To Mrs. Monroe, to answer your question on that, what we're trying to provide is a balance of providing dedicated open space along with giving Dartmouth College an opportunity to address the open space, the additional open space in the context of a larger, their larger property holdings. So we didn't want to necessarily tie that all up when there might be a more comprehensive plan coming down the road in the future. So we wanted to meet the requirements. The other, the other aspect of that, even though there's not dedicated open space of more than 15%, given the wetlands and the other site constraints, there's effectively a lot more. And I can't read the table, but the percentage is quite high of the area on this lot that effectively will remain open space because of the requirements on it. The other thing I'd like to address, I think Mrs. Romano was asking about the access issue, and I just wanted to note that in the, in your subdivision regulations, it distinguishes between developed open space and undeveloped open space. It doesn't require any of it, and it actually talks about taking into consideration the character of the land. And your regulations also say that as a general principle, undeveloped open space should be left in its natural state. So that's what we're proposing for the wildlife corridor portion.
And just to, Monroe again, just to point out, I'm seeing on, I think I'm seeing on the map that you've added the buffer around the wetland because that is a prime wetland. Am I, is that correct?
Yeah, that darker dash.
Long dash, short dash, long dash, short dash.
Yeah, that's the 100-foot buffer.
Okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I'm going to suggest that we move on to staff comments because I'm sure that we'll come back to some of these questions when we get to the impact study, wildlife and like. So if I could pass it back to David and Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin with the Planning Department. Mr. Chair, I have a quick question before I get started. I know that we're going to return to the waiver requests later on in the meeting. Do you want me to identify those so that we're thinking about them, or just save that, the discussion of all waiver requests until we get to it in the meeting?
Let's save it, Tim. Good question. Let's save it.
Okay. I will make one point, though, on the, just for clarification, on the revised application for waivers, which was included with the agenda packet, the first two waiver requests are from 10.2 and 7.2. Those were already dealt with by the board at the initial meeting on this application, I think back in, I think it was back in March. One was, I think 10.2 was a waiver request from having to go through preliminary subdivision, and the other was from 7.2, the fees, which was, that waiver was not granted. So they're, just in case you're keeping track of the number of waiver requests identified in the staff memo versus the number that are identified on the application for waivers, there are two more on the application for waivers again because those were dealt with at a prior meeting. Just going to hit a couple highlights. In the staff memo, I think the applicant has already addressed many of the things that I was going to talk about. With respect to the open space, they are proposing to cover 15%, which is the minimum required under 12.2. As noted in the staff memo, we will continue working with the applicant to ensure that this area, or whatever area is ultimately decided upon, is appropriately protected as is required under Section 12.2 D and E of the subdivision regulations. We imagine a set of deed restrictions, and we will continue to work with the applicant on developing those as part of a condition of approval. You can see that the related draft condition of approval, it's identified as number 22 towards the rear of the staff memo. The applicant did, there was some discussion just now about the active recreational areas to be located within the confines of the development. There is a, in particular, there is a 30-foot by 60-foot active use area that's located to the rear of the clubhouse building. We would suggest that that area be labeled more specifically as to its proposed use. The fiscal impact study will be discussed by the board later on the meeting, so I will skip over that for now. Section 12.5 of the subdivision regulations addresses off-site improvements. At the moment, the only off-site improvement specifically related to this project or proposed for this project is a crosswalk that will connect the, will connect the development site to the multi-use path on the east side of Mount Support Road. There is also, as noted by the applicant, a sewer main that needs to be extended north from roughly, approximately where the timberwood development is, north to serve this development and the conceptual development that will be located across the road at 402 Mount Support Road. The developer for 402 Mount Support Road, the Braverman Company, has obtained approval from the council to extend the sewer main. And as has been noted, the Braverman Company and Michaels are continuing to work on an agreement as to who and when, who will build and when the sewer extension will be built, and in an agreement on how to apportion costs. A large topic, which I believe we'll get to separately later on in this meeting, is traffic. We have, staff has been taking a very close look at not just Michaels' traffic impact study, but also going back and looking at the traffic studies for the DHMC Tower Project, the 343 Mount Support Road Project, and as well as the 402 Mount Support Road Project. The, uh, Braverman Company was, um, was kind enough to share, uh, with staff, the, uh, the, the draft traffic study for, for that development at 402 Mount Support Road. So now that we have all the data, we've been combing through that, uh, very carefully and, uh, are, are arriving at some, um, some proposed, uh, ideas and, and, and numbers. Uh, and I think we will talk about, talk about that more later on in the meeting. Um, a related conditions of approval, uh, with respect to traffic and traffic improvements can be found. Right now they're identified as number 19 and 20, uh, located towards the end of the staff memo. Uh, finally, the applicant has engaged advanced transit in discussions on, uh, where and when and how to construct a, a, a bus stop to serve the needs, uh, at the residence of 401 Mount Support Road. Uh, we encourage those, uh, those, the, those, uh, discussions to continue. And a, uh, related draft condition of approval is currently identified as number 21, located towards the end of the staff memo. Uh, moving on to the site plan regulations, um, we, we, as, as we just noted, we'll talk about waivers, uh, later on. But I did want to just point out one at the moment. Uh, this is section 8.1 of the, of the site plan review regulations, which requires that, uh, the applicant shall construct and complete all design and construction requirements prior to the issuance of the, of the certificate of occupancy. Uh, in this instance, uh, the applicant is proposing sort of a phase project. Phase one would include, um, construction of the clubhouse building to serve as a, as a leasing office that the construction of the clubhouse building, I believe, is, uh, planned for, uh, the summer of 2021. And there are a series of site improvements that are proposed to be constructed along with, uh, the, uh, the clubhouse building and, and which will need to be completed in order to, uh, obtain a temporary CO for the clubhouse. But, um, because of, because of the requirements of 8.1, a waiver is needed to allow, uh, to allow the city to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, uh, for the, um, uh, for the clubhouse prior to the completion of the rest of the improvements. Just moving along, the, um, with respect to the revised landscaping exhibit, I think it's the case that the, uh, just, just to clarify, I think it's the case that the landscaping exhibit that was shown tonight as part of the PowerPoint presentation is an update from the planning exhibit that was in, that was in, included with the agenda packet. Uh, and we are pleased to see that the, uh, the snow storage has been removed from that area and that additional plannings are proposed. Um, I, I, I don't know if it's possible to include even more trees, uh, than, than what is proposed. Uh, but that may be, uh, something that the applicant can consider. Uh, however, there is still need for snow storage. There was, I, I believe on, on the original plan, there, there was snow storage proposed for the, um, for the, for the parking that is, is to a 90 degree angle of the landscaping strip that we're talking about. The southernmost area of parking, uh, maybe there's 10 or 10 or so spots there. I think that was designated as snow storage and it doesn't appear to be any longer. Uh, but even, even then, even at that point, uh, there, there was some concern, staff had some concerns that, again, even then, there wasn't sufficient, necessarily sufficient, uh, snow storage throughout the site. So I, so I think snow storage does remain an issue. It's not something that we want to see, uh, at the front of the lot, uh, but, but, um, but it, we should look at opportunities for, for placing it elsewhere. Staff would recommend, um, staff would recommend that the lighting, uh, plan be revised to ensure that there is no spillage, if you will, uh, from the, the southern edge of the parking lot into the wildlife corridor. Just moving on to the conditional use permit to allow access parking. Uh, the, as, as, uh, as the applicant noted, the maximum number of, of parking spaces permitted by right, if you will, are, is, is 556. Uh, 557 are being, are, are proposed at this time to be, to be constructed. Uh, in addition, the, uh, 25 parking spaces that are now reserved for future development, uh, along the, the spine of the interior access road, uh, those, those do require a conditional use permit uh, to allow, uh, to allow more than 120% of the minimum parking, uh, spaces. Uh, to do, to, to grant that conditional use permit, uh, to allow approximately 125% of the minimal required. The planning board must look at section 307, 3B2 of the zoning ordinance, uh, which sets forth the applicable criteria, uh, A through D, um, when we, when it comes to, uh, when it comes time to discuss the merits of the conditional use permit request. Uh, be happy to, uh, walk you through those criteria and answer any questions, uh, that you have about that. As I noted, the city engineer did, uh, shared staff's concern about, um, needing, needing additional snow storage areas. And I'll let, um, I'll let Brian chime in if he has, uh, has anything else that he wanted to, to specifically discuss tonight. Uh, the last thing I wanted to go over was just, um, on page 13 of the staff memo. A deliberation, just to get everyone's mind clear about where we're headed. Um, in, in this instance, there, there are five decisions that need to be, need to be made once the public hearing is closed, which again, we don't expect to occur, uh, until the, the June 8th planning board meeting. But once the public hearing is, is, uh, closed, the board has to do five things. Uh, that first they have to, first you have to determine whether the development is scattered and premature, uh, which is a, uh, requirement under section 10.3C of the subdivision regulations. And we can, it might be useful at that point to, to specifically read into the record that the language of, of 10.3C, just so it's clear what we're, what we're referring to and discussing. Number two, uh, the board will have to determine, uh, whether or not to grant the requested waivers from the subdivision regulations. Uh, three, the board will have to determine whether or not to grant the waivers from the site plan regulations. Number four, uh, the board will have to make a determination of the conditional use permit to allow access parking. And then finally, uh, you'll have to make a decision on, uh, granting the subdivision and site plan requests. Um, at the moment, there are 31 or 32, uh, conditions of approval. Draft conditions of approv, approval, excuse me, if you have any questions about any of them, I'm, I'm more than happy to ask. I would point out very quickly that, um, proposed condition number 25 is redundant of, um, of condition number 21. So you can, you can ignore 25. That will, that will be excised. And, uh, I think that's all I had for now. Brian, did you, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, hello, this is Brian Vincent. Um, yeah, uh, just a couple of things. I had some comments about the grading around the interior wetland. It looked like some of the pavement was actually lower than the, the existing wetland in terms of elevation. So that's something that I'd like to discuss or, or determine if that's, if my view of that is correct. Um, and then I had some comments about the drainage analysis. I was looking for some catch basin grate capacity calculations. Um, and lastly, I was looking for some more detail on sub drainage design systems for the buildings and any kind of sub drainage for the proposed parking and, uh, access roads.
So Brian, uh, I take it you'd be looking for responses in the coming days, not this evening?
Correct. Yes.
Fine. Can I take a brief pause here and just, uh, Sarah, have you joined the conversation?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. So you have.
Okay. I have, I'm on the phone, but luckily my, my new computer is able to, it can't, it can't pick up my voice, but apparently it can pick up the slides. I see a staff comment and general question. Is that right? Is that where you are?
Correct. Okay, great.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So, uh, anything else from staff?
No, I don't, David, this is Tim. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? David Brooks?
No, I think you've covered it adequately. Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move to, and, yes.
Chair Garland, I have a quick question. This is Monroe.
Yes, Joan.
Um, what we were just talking about, what Mr. Vincent was just talking about, um, if I read his comments correctly, he, and he was talking about, about the, um, the difference in, in height of the land for, near the southern entrance. And I thought that I saw in the comments that it said near the wetland. And so I was wondering where that wetland was. I don't see anything on, on any of the maps that show any kind of a wetland near that south entrance.
Was he talking about the central wetland?
No, um, I, I thought that, I thought that Mr. Vincent in his comments was talking about the, the southern entrance, you know, the emergency entrance to Mount Support Road. Maybe I misunderstood it.
I don't think so.
Maybe I misunderstood it.
Chair, could Brian can, um, clarify that?
Brian, are you there?
This is Brian. Um, yeah, I was talking about the central wetland. Um, I believe it was the south side of that wetland.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, I think we've exhausted staff comments. So now I'm going to move on to the third item on the agenda that I mentioned earlier, which is, uh, continue our general discussion of the project to make sure that we all have a full understanding. I'm going to kick off because I went through it and realized now maybe there are things that I missed. Uh, but there are clearly things that I don't have answers to. So first of all, just at a very high level, is this development required to meet an expansion of Dartmouth's graduate program? Or is these people who are currently housed somewhere on campus that will be moving to this new site?
Daniel, are you available to answer that question? Sorry, this is Christina.
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. So, uh, Dartmouth currently has, uh, under, undersupply of graduate housing. So this is to meet the existing demand.
Okay. So it's, it's, uh, um, current students. And then I did a recap. Uh, so the proposal is obviously four buildings, one with 81 units and one with the three with 76 units. Um, and those translate into 638 called sometimes in your documentation bedroom, sometimes beds. We can talk a little more about that. But then I realized I don't know what a unit means. And then I went to the plans and I was missing something. I couldn't find any floor plans. So I don't know, are there elevators in these buildings? Are there sprinkler systems? What do the units look like?
Yes, I can answer that.
Okay.
This is Christina with Michaels, um, the applicant. So yes, there are elevators in these buildings. Um, as you say, there are four buildings. One of the buildings has, um, the ground floor, uh, building number two, that is, uh, adjacent to the clubhouse. Um, that has additional units because it has that additional floor. Um, the difference between beds and bedrooms, um, is, it's pretty interchangeable. Uh, student housing is usually provided furnished and it's also leased by the bed or bedroom. So what this means is, um, a tenant will lease and they will get their own bedroom and they have their own individual lock. And either people can come with roommates who will lease another bedroom and say a two bedroom unit and they will share a living room and a kitchen. Or we will do roommate matching for them. So say you're a graduate student who's starting and doesn't know anybody else, we'll do a roommate matching situation for them. So the typologies for the apartment types that we have are one bedrooms, two bedrooms and four bedrooms. So the four bedroom units provide the most affordable option where it's four bedrooms. It'll be four individuals and there are two bed, two bathrooms in there. So four individuals will live together. They will share two bathrooms and they will share a kitchen and a living room. So that's the difference between sort of a unit and the bedroom and the, you know, bed.
So would it be possible to get floor plans?
Sure.
I think that would be very helpful. Uh, so I presume, how many of the one bedroom are available?
Um, I can give that to you. Um, it's, I would say the majority of the units are two bedroom units. And then, um, there's one bedrooms and there's four bedroom units. So I'd say it's probably about 60% two bedrooms and then like 20 to 30% one bedrooms and 20 to 30% four bedroom units. So I can give you the exact breakdown.
So that, the, the, what I'm getting at is children. So the two bedroom units, um, would be something that a couple with children might consider.
Um, typically because these are student housing units, they are going to be leased to, to, uh, unrelated individuals. So we'll be leasing them by the bedroom. So it would typically be two adults.
Correct. But if, if there's a married couple and they want to have two bedrooms, they could use one bedroom for themselves and another bedroom for a child.
Yeah, then they would have two leases, but, um, that's standardly, uh, not, uh, the focus of the student housing leasing market.
Okay. There's, there's nothing that excludes that.
It, there's nothing that excludes that, um, but the way the agreement works with, um, Dartmouth College, uh, the way we market our units to graduate, uh, students, they get priority. Um, so it won't exclude them, but it won't be targeted towards, um, uh, families.
Understood. Um, and then my last question, does the, the rental, uh, include parking? Or is parking to be offered separately at a, an additional price?
The rent does include surface parking. So it is included, uh, and it would be, you know, first come, first served.
Okay. So that was my follow-up question. So the rental includes surface parking that we assigned or not assigned?
Not assigned.
Not assigned, just first, and, and presumably parking for one car. Wouldn't have somebody renting a bedroom that somehow shows up with three cars.
That's correct.
Okay. That's pretty obvious, but I had to ask. And then I had a question. I went on the Dartmouth website. Parking and transportation. And it wasn't terribly helpful in that it says all commuter, commuting, uh, brackets, living off campus, students are required to register vehicles, contact the parking office to see your, if your address is in a commuting zone. So would this building be in a commuting zone?
So the plan, um, with this site particularly is to accommodate transportation to the college through the private shuttle. So what we are doing here is as part of our operations, uh, we will be providing a shuttle for our residents to leave their cars here at their apartments. And then they would take the shuttle into Hannover to go to classes. So the idea would be they wouldn't be driving their cars into downtown Hannover.
I, I understand. I appreciate, but does that prevent them from getting, from phoning the office and saying, uh, I need a parking place? In the rental agreement that stipulates that there are no parking, there's no parking available at the college?
Yeah, that is my understanding and I can defer to Dan on that. But just like there is a dearth of available housing for graduate students, there's also a dearth of available parking in downtown Hannover.
I'm sorry, is that Kathy?
No, this is Laurel Stavis.
Laurel.
Thank you. Um, are the vehicles that may be owned by the students who live in these apartments, will they be registered in the city of Lebanon?
Um, I would assume that, uh, the way the laws in New Hampshire work is if you are living in New Hampshire, uh, for a certain amount of months, you have to register at your address. Um, and you know, your state of residence. So, um, these are going to be annual leases. So I would assume that they would have to be registered, um, with the city of Lebanon.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. That was my list of questions. Now I'll open it up to other members.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dan Justinski from Dartmouth College. In that question, I didn't want to step on, on, on your asking the question. The intent with this, the original RFP was to propose developments such that the applicants that, that, uh, reside at this new development will not be issued a, an, an everyday permit to park at Dartmouth. There could be that emergency where somebody would have to drive into town. The expectation is on that rare occasion, they are, are paying for a parking spot, not through the, the Dartmouth side of things. Uh, everything will be, uh, in the Everything will be in the communication such that it is the rarity for a tenant of this development to drive into Hanover. And and that would be articulated. Related to that, too, is the question about families. As you know, we have another small project in Lebanon. And as we market the spaces to our prospective graduate students, pushing the families to go to the family-friendly Saichem Village and the and the younger single applicants to go to the Mount Support side should keep the the mix, should keep that separated such that we don't run into the the family situation going into Mount Support. There are two hundred and seventy units at Saichem and and we are accommodating of the family environments there.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll be coming back to this question when we get to the impact study. So this is very helpful in setting that up. Other board members with question, general questions on the project.
Bruce, Sarah Welsh here.
Yes, Sarah.
I just want a clarification. I have a number of questions about the waivers. We I was a bit confused by what Mr. Corwin said. We will be going through the extensive staff memo and we'll get to the waivers for both site regulations. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, that's you missed my announcement of our program tonight, but yes, you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Any any other questions regarding just the overall project? If not, I'll move on.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Kathy.
I have a number of questions and concerns. Chief among them are three. The first one deals with a statement that was made. I think it's in the April twentieth letter. It says undergraduate students are not eligible to lease at the property. So my question is, will Dartmouth or Michaels accept a condition prohibiting undergraduates as LACs?
So there are certain rules for fair housing where we cannot preclude. You know, students are not technically a protected class. So we can't, you know, they're not protected in that we can't preclude them and we can't exclude them. The way we're setting up our agreements with the college and the way sort of our our ground lease is working, we're having a marketing waterfall, which basically prioritizes who is getting leased these apartments. So the first group of people who are eligible to lease these apartments will be the graduate students. So they have a certain timeframe for the pre-leasing. So it's to, you know.
I don't want to interrupt you, but we have a lot of things to cover tonight and I understand that. And I'm, my impression of protected classes is that if age were a protective class, you could not exclude them, but because it isn't, you actually could exclude them if you were willing to.
So is that something that the city is interested in?
I'm not speaking for the city. I I'm a board member and I have a question. And you can think about it and get back to us if you wish. But I was just interested in knowing whether you would be amenable to that condition. The second concern that I have, I walked to the site for almost two and a half hours. And I'm the granddaughter of a farmer. I've walked a lot of farm fields in my younger years, including some on stream and riversides, and I have never walked a site that was so squishy, muddy, and wet as this one. And I I was amazed when I actually got up near the top of the site at the the large size of the pond and the streams that the kind of serpentine were winding through that area. And I know that water flows downwards. So as we proceed, I will have a lot of questions relating to how that stormwater is going to be handled. And someone at a previous meeting mentioned de-watering the site. I would like to learn more about what you mean by that. And it kind of dovetails into another concern that I've heard voiced by a number of people. And that is the amount of parking that's required for those three hundred and nine units puts a lot of asphalt on a very wet site. And there are only two ways to cure that. One is to have a lesser number of units. And the other is to put the parking someplace else. So I have a couple of questions and again, don't have to answer them tonight, but to think about them. I know you said at a previous meeting that you couldn't put parking garages in the basement because of the high water table and I understand that. But Elmwood Gardens and another project that's supposedly coming online on Spencer Street in Lebanon are have parking on the first level above ground or at ground level, which would basically take maybe I'm trying to figure out nineteen units out of building three and another nineteen out of building four, and that would reduce the amount of asphalt you'd needed. Or I saw a comment in, I think it was the April twenty-seventh minutes that said no stone walls will be removed from the site. But that that can't be correct because all the diagrams that you've given us show stone walls going right through building three. And obviously, if you're going to build that building there, the stone walls will be removed and it's very wet to the south side of those stone walls. If you eliminated building three, you'd be taking out seventy-six units and you would you could really increase your space for snow storage and reduce the number of parking spaces you needed and you'd still have two hundred and thirty, two hundred and seventy units. I'm sure you don't have six hundred and thirty-eight unhoused graduate students currently. And you could put quite a few of them in two hundred and fifty units. So just thoughts that I had to reduce the asphalt coverage and to give you more space for activities and to handle a very wet site.
We appreciate your comments. I'll start by saying we do have market studies that show we do have that many graduate students that are currently unhoused or also living in areas where they're paying a significant amount of money towards their rent. One of the reasons that we can't do this as structured parking or parking under the building is because of the cost of construction. I mentioned this during the last meeting on April twenty-seventh. One of the driving principles for this project is that these new units will be leased at the current graduate housing rents that are being paid at Saichem Village and at North Park, which is another graduate housing location in Hanover. So our our sort of standing mantra is to maintain an affordability for the students. So in doing so, we've had to balance sort of the cost of construction against the affordability of the rents. So it's it's kind of a tipping point that we've been functioning. The wetness of the soils has to do with the type of the soil that is in the topsoil. So it's the, I think it's the 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 two inches below grade to five inches. It's a glacial fill, so it has a problem in which that it doesn't drain. So one of the things that we're doing is we're exporting that off-site to deal with that condition. And we are also dealing with the water condition by doing the onsite stormwater retention, which we've provided significant detail. That's located underneath the parking for building one and building two. And we could provide more information on that. But that's how we're dealing with the wetness of the soils.
Bruce, Mr. Chairman, this is Tom.
Yes.
I'm going to bring up the same issue that I did last meeting with the other project, the other large housing project. It's going to be built on the same same avenue. And that is, we're in a time right now of the coronavirus that is causing all kinds of things, including colleges and universities like the University of California State System declaring that they're probably going to go to no classroom activities except for laboratories and a few engineering classes for this fall. So we're seeing a lot of colleges and universities that are not going to be fully open this fall. I understand that the first building, which is the clubhouse, doesn't come online until 2021. And then I guess the first question is, when do they see this project coming online? And in the design that they're doing, is there a way that they are going to be able to have, assuming that we don't have a some means of protection through either an antibody for this or some means of treatment? How are they going to do social distancing and how are they going? Will the designs be everybody coming into indoor corridors accessing their rooms? Or are there going to be multiple entrances and exits for people from their own units exterior as opposed to interior? I think these are the kinds of things that we're going to have to be looking at. Do we, are three hundred and four hundred people in a unit in a building going to be feasible going forward? And the other aspect of that is if people are afraid to use mass transit, they're going to use their own cars. And if they do use their own cars, I noticed in a previous document from Hanover talking about the concerns of traffic in the Hanover for students who are going to be using their own cars. These are the kinds of questions that I think have to be looked at going forward. You know, we've had a number of outbreaks and various different things all the way back from the nineteen sixty, nineteen sixteen polio epidemics for the Spanish flu in nineteen eighteen to the Ebola in, you know, in the spring of two thousand thirteen through sixteen and then now the coronavirus. These kinds of epidemics aren't going to be getting becoming less. We're going to see more of these and so we're going to see, I think, pressures on how are we going to do social distancing? And how are we going to be able to protect ourselves? And I'm just not sold that large concentrations of people are the way that the way they're going to set the future. Anyway, that's my comment. I guess I would I would like to see how they would be addressing this and how it would impact their own projects.
So first, to answer your question, the plan is to deliver this, these apartment buildings in the August of 2022. So it would be for the academic year of twenty-two. The other thing, so each of the four buildings have two entrances. They come in on each side of the elbow. So that's how they would be entered. You would, I would assume, if there was another issue, you would shelter in place, just like you're sheltering in place for the epidemic now. I'll hint again that we are building this housing in the most affordable approach as we can in order to provide housing units for people who currently can't afford to rent in older buildings that are probably of poorer quality. So that's what I can comment. You know, the cost of new construction is very expensive. And we can't build single-family houses or townhouses and be able to have them afford rent. So it's unfortunately a push and pull that happens in in multifamily development. So what we are doing is we have, you know, we're having green building approaches that we're doing. We have very clean mechanical systems that are going to have clean air. They have their own individual mechanical system, so they're not recirculating air that's shared with other units. So that's what's going to be encompassed in the design of the building.
Mr. Chair, I have a, this is Laurel Stavis.
Yes, Laurel.
This is a question directed both at Michaels and at Dartmouth. My understanding is that Dartmouth owns the land and is executing a contractual agreement with Michaels, which will then be responsible for putting up the buildings and renting them and maintaining them and doing everything that has to be done with those buildings. And Dartmouth, it has a hands-off position with that, which is markedly different from other types of Dartmouth housing. Is that is that an accurate statement?
I I can comment. It is not like what they have on campus or within, you know, right in downtown Dartmouth. I mean, I'm sorry, in downtown Hanover. They are still involved in that our business agreement with them has certain things that we need to adhere to. So they're not hands-off per se. We're working together as we operate for things like leasing and managing and guidelines. There are rules that we need to adhere to to meet the Dartmouth College, you know, what they expect for their housing. So it's not necessarily hands-off.
The question remains, what is the entity that will have the ongoing day-to-day responsibility for the management of this, these buildings?
That is the Michaels, that's Michael's Student Living Management Company. That is correct. So we were procured to do the management. We currently manage housing both on campus and off campus throughout the country. The Michaels company has been around since the early seventies managing housing, so.
Yes, I understand that. I I wonder, Mr. Chair and other members of the board and staff, if it might be appropriate for the planning board to have a copy of the agreement between Dartmouth and Michaels?
I'll refer to staff on that issue.
This is Tim. I I don't know that that's something the board can ask, but I don't know that it's something that the applicant is required to disclose.
They're they're not standardly public record. Both are not public entities. It's not a state school.
This is, this is David Brooks. I I agree with Mr. Corwin's comment that, again, I think you could ask, but I don't think there's anything in your regulations that would allow you or require them to to make that public.
Understood.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sarah Welsh here.
Yes, Sarah.
I just wanted to clarify something that that occurred to me when Tom was talking, Tom Mess was talking. Can I ask, is it Karen? I'm sorry. Who is the KV on my screen?
It's Christina Wagan.
Forgive me, Christina. That's the problem of having problems connecting here. Thank you. Christina, my question is this. These are not bedrooms or rooms, whether they are two or four, in which two beds and two people will be in the same room. Is that correct?
That is correct. So they are not, that would be doubly occupied. These are single occupancy beds.
That's what I, that's what I gathered from all the materials I've seen. Therefore, there are going to have to be, by the time you open up in August, God willing, in August of 2022, there are going to have to be from some agency, whether it's the college or the state or the the federal government, some ability for people to be able to be in a connected apartment but sleeping separately. And therefore, let's, you know, fifty percent of one's exercise as a breathing human being will be done in the privacy of your own room. And my second point to confirm that this is a good idea is I was a graduate student and I was a rather stupid graduate student. It took me five years to get my master's degree, mostly because I didn't go to class very often. But the my point is this, if I had not first had my own apartment and later my study in whatever house or apartment I lived with once I got married, I would not have ever finished that degree. And therefore, the acknowledgement that scholars sometimes don't get a carol of any quietness in the library and might just want to go back to their their bedroom to study is a very positive thing on the part of Michaels. And I do think that that will also be something, a form of sequestering that will actually be potentially good two years from now. So I did want to say that while I acknowledge that Tom has certain things to be concerned about, I don't believe it's the place for us to take any more time on this because the single bedrooms will go a great deal towards allowing people who don't want to be sitting around with other people to go into a place that they can deny another person to come into. No, you can't come into my bedroom. I'm going to sleep now. Thank you.
Thank you. And and to the point is they actually have their own locks, their own leases, so they.
Even better. Even better. Uh huh. Even better. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Any other questions or comments on the project overall before I move on to site visit?
Mr. Chairman, this is David Brooks.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, um, provide a clarification on a comment that Ms. Romano made about the, um, alluding to the fair housing rules. The state of New Hampshire has its own, uh, housing discrimination laws, which do include age as a protected class. Uh, so although it's not in the federal Fair Housing Act, it is part of the state's laws, um, that prevent or prohibit, uh, discrimination on the basis of age. So again, I think, um, I had a back and forth with, uh, with a, a member of the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, um, who wrote the article on, um, on fair housing in New Hampshire several years ago. Um, and he said basically it is Dartmouth's, uh, obligation to comply with the regulations unless the city, um, imposes a condition, um, that which would put the city in the, uh, legal line of fire, so to speak. So that's, that's just a clarification I wanted to provide for the board.
All right. Thank you for that, David. Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, Kathy.
Um, another, um, comment in the staff memo number 32, there's a statement that says, "Property owner is responsible for maintenance of stormwater management system." And that follows up kind of on Laurel's question. You know, is it Dartmouth? Is it Michaels? Like, I, I think as we go along, rather than saying things like property owner, we might just say property owner slash Dartmouth or, you know, we might really, um, clarify exactly who we're referring to because this is a, a unique partnership. We might be assuming that someone is responsible for it when they're assuming that someone else is. I think we ought to be clear.
Hi, this is, uh, David Fenstermacher. And just to clarify too, this is subject to the NHDES alteration of terrain permit. And as part of that, as part of the permit, there will be a name and contact given. And at this point, that is Michaels. So we can clarify it, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, the state is also making sure that there's someone identified for this maintenance.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm going to move on to item number four, which was, um, anyone who has made a site visit um, since the last meeting. Kathy, you mentioned that you've been on. Do you have any other observations to share with the board?
I think I would just reiterate the ones that I made previously. Again, looking at these diagrams and seeing all those little dots and dashes up near the wetland, I'd really like to see an outline of this, the actual streams that are running and the ponds. Because when I look at the larger site plan, I can't tell where they are. And, um, again, concerns about how wet that soil is.
All right. Thank you for that, Kathy. Do we have any other board member who's done a site visit and would like to share?
Chair Garland. Monroe here.
Yes, Joan.
Um, about, I have comments about my visit. Um, that was good information and I appreciate, um, the answers to why the ground there was so squishy and what will be done about it. Cause that was a concern of mine and a somewhat surprise, um, because it was, we were past mud season and it, it just, I didn't, okay, so thank you for that. As far as the wetlands go, um, I was very surprised that the wetland that's in the very center of the four buildings was considered a wetland because, um, there, there, for me, there was almost no indication of water there at all. And I know that one doesn't necessarily see water 365 days to make it be a wetland. But on the other hand, um, it just, I couldn't figure out like where the water might be coming from or not coming from to make that wetland. And I was trying to understand why there were two stone walls on either side of it. So, so that's a wetland question that is there, there's someone other, I, I know that wetland scientists are engaged to do this, but it's just, it just, it just is very different than the many, many, many that I've seen over the years. Um, and so I was, I, I can't, I, 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 I'm at a loss to, to believe that that really is a wetland there. Um, so are any of the, the staff able to answer?
Hi, well, this is Dave Fenstermacher. I can share, um, I know we submitted, I'm not sure if you have a, a record of it, but we have the report from our wetland scientist. And this was something that was also picked up in the past by another wetland scientist and we confirmed it. And it's really just a forested wetland and it is from, I'm not the wetland scientist, so I, I'll share this with you and I can have him on the, um, pulled together response. But it's really based on, um, the groundwater and not streams feeding it. And it's, I think it's more of what the soil profile is in the, the vegetation there versus being a wetland. So we're keeping the forested land, the forest, the trees in that area to maintain the wetlands. And it will still be grabbing, uh, the water from the groundwater based on the soil that's there. But, um, it's been confirmed and that's one that we, we shared this report with, uh, the DES Wetland Bureau as well. And they were, uh, in agreement on that. So, uh, but I'll, I won't pretend I'm a wetland scientist beyond that, but I wanted to let you know that there has been a report and discussions with the state on this piece.
Uh, because I, in, in visiting it, I was almost wondering, um, you know, looking at the other wetland where there's a pond and there's obviously trickles of water and the pond looks, looks like, it seemed very obvious to me that it was a, um, a beaver dam that had created that pond. Um, and, and they're pretty good little critters indicative of wetlands. That's what they love to do is find a wet area and dam it up and make, make a couple of nice homes for themselves. Um, but, and so I, I, I almost was feeling like the one in the middle seemed maybe not, you know, not crucial in keeping. And, and in perhaps by not having that one, um, the building could be moved farther away. Um, on, to the north and south of that wetland, there are, there are indications on, on our, on the maps that we've had. And you could see it on the ground that it, that indeed that there's a whole, a whole line of water that's going across the property from almost exactly north, straight through the back, the back part of the property to the south and that, and including that nice pond. So, um, I, I just, to me, that, that part of the property is the really valuable part. And it does look to me that building, and I think it's four, is four the one that's in the, the northwest corner?
Yes.
Okay. It's, yes. It seemed to me that number four really was encroaching or, uh, coming extremely close to that wet area that is marked on, on all of our, our paperwork as that the parking lot is like right up against the wetland and that the current wooded area that makes a very nice buffer will be completely taken down. And the pavement will go completely up to the edge of that, that buffer. Um, I mean, it, it won't be a buffer. It'll go right up to the edge of, of the wetland. And that, that concerns me, um, a lot. And so I, I also am concerned with, with how much the buildings are going into that, into that area. And not just the buildings, but, but the, the pavement. Um, and I think it might've been Ms. Romano who was talking about the amount of parking spaces. And I wonder if is, if there was any chance at all that, that that area, the, the parking area that's to the south of building four and then to the west of building four and then to the northeast of building four might possibly have become, um, porous pavement? And then seem like that might help keep that, that wetland alive? That's because as soon as water is not allowed to get into a wetland, that's the death of the wetland. And it, it is marked on your, on your maps. And there are, actually, I, I guess what, what you could, I would call is like puddles that showed that there was water there probably a lot of the year. Whereas that one in the middle, I mean, I only saw a couple, and I accept that it's a forested wetland. Um, but it, to me, a wetland that's most valuable is a wetland that has water. Because most of the, uh, animals that use it, they're there for the water. Um, so just a, an, an idea, if the buildings can't be, if four can't be moved farther away, can there be porous pavement put in there? And if you're going to be removing the soil there, the soil that's there now that doesn't drain, perhaps the soil that replaces it will drain better. Comment, response?
Again, I think we'll, we'll take your comments into account and, uh, we'll share those concerns with the wetland scientists and get their feedback. Um, but they'll, they'll be the ones that'll be able to, to respond better to the, the feeding of the wetlands and the, the nature of the wetlands.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but I will say that that center of wetland, again, was something that was delineated. And I think DES might've gone out there. So that's, that's a protected wetland by the state. So in terms of, um, encroaching on that, that's probably not going to happen.
We can't disturb us.
Chair?
Yep. Yes.
This is Kathy again. When I was out there walking, I would, it was hard to really identify exactly where that center wetland is. So I was going by the location of the stone walls that are, I think they're, I misfigured those light lavender lines there clanking the wet central wetland area. And it just seemed to me that the, the ground was actually wetter to the south of that wall than it was to the north. Seems strange, but that's the way it seemed when we were out there.
There certainly was a lot of mud, this is Monroe, that was outside of that forested wetland. And, and right at the beginning of the, the woods roads. Of course, there was, um, there was already major disturbance of the stone walls there, obviously to get the heavy equipment, uh, far enough in to the forest to be able to make those, um, test borings. There, there were already a lot of trees newly torn down. And like I say, the, the stone wall had been broken to allow the machinery to get, to get in. And in that area was very wet and muddy.
All right. Thank you for those comments.
I have, um, Chair Garland, I have one other question, um, from the site walk.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Monroe again. And it's the house that's on the neighboring property to the north. Um, it looks to me, I didn't walk all the way over, but it's fairly easy to see over there. And especially before the trees leafed out, that the property, the house on the property to the north is very, very close to the northern property line for this parcel. Um, and so I, I'm concerned whenever I see, um, abutters who have been living years with just vegetation close to them, I'm always concerned when this amount of traffic and headlights, um, and parking, it seemed to me to be, going to be very, very close, um, to the abutters. So I was concerned and hoping I, I would have to look at the, the new landscaping plan again to see if there were any, any vegetation or anything that's planned in that area to, to help shield that house that's there to the north.
Counselor Monroe, this is Dan Justinski again from Dartmouth College. Dartmouth College Real Estate Office does operate that home as part of our, our graduate and staff housing when we have an applicant that is, is looking for a small, single family. Um, so it is a Dartmouth College operated property.
Okay.
And the, the trees that are there on that northern border are within the setback and those are, are going to remain as they do today.
Um, so, so at trying to inject a tiny bit of humor, does that mean that future renters of that house now with 307 units neck, right next door and, you know, 500 or 600 people, are they going to get a break in rent? Because suddenly they're not living in the country anymore.
They're going to have a lot more friends.
With that one.
The, the interesting thing, it goes towards that, the, the long-term, uh, zoning regulations in the city. And, you know, the intent of the, of, of the city to bring more mixed use as you go around the corner on, on La Haye. Um, the, the, the use for the single family residence, uh, i- is our current use of it. But in, over the long term, over the next, uh, two decades, you could see as, as you go around that road, there, the potential for future work that would not have a small, single family home right there. Uh, but for now, it, it is a, a well-loved house and, um, we have occupants that, uh, when it becomes available, immediately do lease it.
Thank you for your reply.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just, just a quick note on this, this is a landscape architect. I just wanted to let you know that our buffer requirement extends around that corner as well, about 190 feet. It's, uh, shown in our calculations. So there will be proposed plant material that does extend around that corner to, uh, existing vegetation to remain.
Right.
Thank you for that. All right. I think we're done with site visit observations. I'll pause for a second. All right. So I'm now going to move on to impact study. I guarantee you will find very confusing. So bear with me because I am going to take this from the perspective of the rule and try to walk you through what in the documents we've, uh, received correspond to the various sections. So section B1 is wetlands and other nature-related issues. There's a discussion on page three of the VHB letter of 21020. Plus, there is a two-page, uh, addition in our last, um, packet that Tim provided on wildlife. So I'm going to go through these at the end of Sarah, at the end. It's in color. So I'm going to go through each of these just to show you how scattered this is. And then we'll come back and deal with each one individually. Uh, two is school capacity, and that is dealt with in the latest, uh, submission and type, built fiscal impact. Uh, three, streets, that's obviously not applicable. Four is utilities, and that's page four of the VHB letter of 21020. Five is sewage. Six is public safety, and that is in fiscal study, item six, the orig, the first fiscal study that we received. Seven is drainage, and that is on page four of the VHB letter of, again, February 10th, 20. And then fiscal impact is the, uh, combination of the two studies, the one that we received in, uh, previous package, and then the update that was included. So as I say, it's rather scattered. Uh, what I'm going to suggest is we go through item by item. If you don't know what I'm referring to, call out and we'll help you find it.
Can you enlarge it at all?
Well, this is, uh, Michaels impact study. So I'm not quite sure. I've not seen this. And I'm not sure where it's going to follow in the same manner. So perhaps I should ask Michaels if you could follow through. Let's, where, where do you have wetlands and nature that corresponds to? 12 dash dot three B1, which is statement of impact of the proposed development on natural resources, environmental quality and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I would say that's a combination of, um, sections of our drainage report. Yeah, I would say that's a combination of, um, sections of our drainage report and our, we do have the NHDS wetlands application and, um, there, the permit for that. So maybe that's just something that, um, Bruce, for your guys' benefit, just get into one compiled document. But that's, that's how we've addressed it. It's just not an assistant, uh, response.
Although, it, what, I agree with it. It would be helpful to the board if we had it all in one place. Um, but there is half a page on your 210 letter uh, on page three that deals with wetlands.
Yeah. And since that time, we've just, there's been more, um, investigation and materials pulled together.
That we have received or not received.
You have received, that's in the, the drainage report. Uh, it's polished, it's in the, um, the application materials.
So Tim, can you help? Where would, I certainly didn't find that.
The drainage report? Well, which one's this talking about?
This, this is wetlands.
Wetlands.
Wildlife corridors and the like.
Or this was, you know, it should have been submitted as part of our, um, presentation to the Conservation Commission. It's the copy, sorry, yeah. We did submit a copy of the wetlands permit application. And that, that should be on the record. It has all that material.
Mr. Chair, this is, uh, this is Tim Corwin. Perhaps, um, perhaps the applicant should submit, um, a document explaining exactly where everything is located and to the extent that items haven't been adequately addressed, um, that that document does so. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that all of the information that's required by, uh, B1 has been submitted in, in writing to the planning board as it, as it should be. For example, for example, a, you know, information on air quality. I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing that anywhere, but I could have missed it.
All right, so, so I, I agree with you. I was trying to pull together information that I could find. Well, let's, let's go through the rest of it and see if there are any other pieces that we would have applicant to provide by the next meeting.
Uh, Chair Garland?
Yes?
This is Monroe. Um, one thing that we have not really gotten, but I've always felt would be very helpful, is if we could get, say, the minutes from the Conservation Commission's review, reviews. Um, what we've gotten in the past has usually been an extremely short, like a paragraph, of really greatly condensing their discussion. And I mean, like whether members went on sidewalks, what they saw on sidewalks. The Conservation Commission does have, as I, I know of the people who are on it, and they, they do have a quite a lot of, a lot of actual, um, professional expertise, plus people who, as serious hobbies, have studied a lot of the aspects of, um, the environment. So it's, um, that, the fact that we don't have, I'm looking at the February 10 letter, but that one's coming from the, the applicant. And, and I, I always feel I'm missing something if I don't hear what the discussion of the Conservation Commission had and, and their findings.
Yeah, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a letter.
Chair Garland?
There is.
But it is always extremely short compared to their discussion. And I don't find out whether they've gone and seen it, you know, if they've done sidewalks.
But the, the Conservation Commission is, in this instance, Conservation Commission review in this instance, sorry, this is Tim Corwin, um, was required because of the wetland impact. Is that, is that correct, Dave?
Yes, we were going, we went in for a minimal, uh, impact and presented the application for, um, a, for sign-off from the Conservation Commission. And they had comments which they, um, submitted, I thought I saw as one of the past staff packages.
Right. I mean, we can certainly provide those minutes, but that's not something that we would routinely do for an application that's unrelated to the application before you.
Chair Garland? Yes? This is Ernst Oitman. I, I am in the public. I'm sorry, who's this? Ernst Oitman. Sorry, you're in the public, you, you're gonna have to wait till we get to the public, uh, comment portion of this meeting. And also the Chair, Conservation Committee.
Chair, Chair Garland?
Yes?
Um, I am looking at the letter from Mr. Oitman, um, and dated March 13th. And he is, he is the chair. So, um, perhaps we can allow him to speak or to review the, the, the little, the comments that were in the letter? Just a request.
I agree. I'm, David, I'm not sure I can open up the public hearing to just one person. I mean, I'll be happy to include him when we get to the public hearing later in this meeting. So let's hold that, but I think we have a consensus that the board would appreciate having a cons- document addressing this part of the regulation. We don't have that at the moment. So the second item is school capacity. Um, we have a new document that addresses it, uh, which frankly, and this is no criticism, it's simply a mathematical study that makes sense, but somewhat contradicts the debate we had earlier on as to whether there will be married, or not married, but there'll be couples with children in these buildings. Uh, does anybody have any questions about the document that was submitted? This is in our most recent package, was part of the fiscal study.
Chair, we have the consultant available, um, if you would like him to review anything, um, especially, uh, why a second report was provided.
No, I, I appreciate the second report. I was the one that asked for it, and I was very happy to see he was able to reach out to people from the school board and put together information. And frankly, from my perspective, it's as good a guess as to whether there'll be children going to wetland schools from the development or not, for reasons that we debated here. So I'm just asking, do board members have, have questions on that two bed, page and a half document? All right, I'm gonna move on.
Chair? Counselor Winnie, sorry. I, I've got the document popped up. Um, my question was related to, just finding a line, it was on, um, there's a miscellaneous line of 15,000 under municipal costs. And I was curious what falls under that.
Excuse me, Mark Fugier, the consultant. Um, it's really a catch-all for any other department that may, uh, receive some sort of impact. The, the metrics I used, um, for this report where, um, where there is basically measurable, uh, demand for services that I could find with police, fire, and schools. If you start looking at other departments, uh, in the city, uh, it falls off pretty quickly. Um, so it's sort of to catch any other departments that may, uh, feel some impact that we're not aware of, but could be in the future. So it's, it's a catch-all.
All right, so things like road maintenance and, you know, wear and tear and stuff would fall under that?
Yes, off-site, obviously. Uh, onsite would pay for by the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just thinking there's gonna be a lot more traffic up and down Mount Support as a result of this and other projects, so. Or wear and tear on the roads, et cetera. And, and does, is ambulance impact under fire?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Garland?
Yes?
Monroe again?
Yes, Chair.
I'm looking at the, the, the two pages that were in our packet for tonight. And I see that, that, um, uh, Mr. Fugier has gotten slightly, you know, more updated information. Um, and I see that it says that enrollment has declined by 33 students at the Hanover Street Elementary School. But I, I would, I would have to say, um, um, that it just seems to me, just using straight common sense, that with the number of, of housing projects that we have approved, and some of them filled up very quickly and others of them are taking longer to fill up. But I just feel that, that it's inevitable that there will be more children in the schools. And the schools will stop seeing the decline in, in numbers. Because if we had, if I had a table right in front of me, um, that listed the numbers of projects that we have, and keeping in mind that, um, one issue that we have been made aware of is that often divorced parents are, take a two-bedroom apartment and will be one parent with the children. And the children will then go to the, go to that school. And so even though apartments are smaller and they're not made for, for children, um, people will live however tight and, and close they have to to be able to have advantage of their kids going to, to school. And as the school system in, in Lebanon is regarded very highly, um, especially with, with children with special needs. And, um, and we just have such a huge amount of employees at the hospital and we're, and they're going to be increasing as we have the new, the new tower, the new patient tower. So I, I know I'm seeing the statistics in front of me, but I think common sense tells me the schools will, will, again, they will grow again bigger.
But, but the issue here is to what extent will, uh, growth come from this project? And this project is estimating 10 to 15. Uh, but the school board suggested a higher number of 17 to 20, which translated into an estimate of two additional teachers and $200,000 a year. That sounds to me to be pretty large, given the context of this particular project.
But I would also say that we, if I, if I may just go a step farther, that we as a planning board cannot look at these projects as if they were completely isolated with nothing, um, else happening. And that's kind of what happens with our, our traffic reports. Each traffic report for many of these large projects concludes by saying, this will not have a big impact on the local, on, on the local intersections. However, as I've stated before, 100 cars or 99 cars from this project and 99 cars from that project and 99 cars from that project, all being built within the same one, two, three, four-year period, does add up to.
Correct, and that, that's why we're going to be treating traffic separately and differently. But I don't see any way that we can tie school, cost of school into development across the city.
Hopefully, the impact fees will help cover that.
Mr. Chair, this is Laurel Davis. I have a question.
Yeah, yes, Laurel.
Um, what is the, uh, gross local property tax revenue based on? It's a question, I guess, for either Dartmouth or Michael's. And therein lies the problem. It's tough to know who to ask.
Well, um, Mark could comment on how this is estimated. Um, it's typically based on the approved value, uh, once the project is completed. Um, so he, he can hint on that. Um, and that's estimated, uh, based on mostly the cost of construction and the income approach. Mark, do you want to detail that?
Well, you, you just answered it. So that, I mean, we, we looked at some internal documents that Michael had as far as their estimated cost of construction, um, and the due diligence that they did when they went forward with this project. And, and that's where we came up with the value, the estimated value of the development.
And Laurel, to answer your question somewhat differently, we've never been successful as a board and city in having the city officer review a number or numbers provided by an applicant to give an opinion as to the reasonableness of those numbers.
That's not what I was asking, though.
Well, you were asking where the number.
Correct.
Numbers come from, and I'm saying, we're getting them from the applicant, but we don't have any separate review by the city as to whether those are reasonable.
Right, so this is, this is based on what we think the property will be worth, um, upon completion. Obviously, the tax assessor, as, as the chair alludes, will have his own opinion. Um, and the property will be assessed once it's completed. But it's based on your.
Can I answer your question?
I have a follow-up question.
Please.
Which, which goes back to the point that, the points that Tom raised a few minutes ago. And that is a little bit hard to put this into words, but we are in a completely different fiscal environment now in the city of Lebanon and surrounding communities. Um, we are looking at deep, deep holes in our municipal budgets um, that probably we will not be able to climb out of for several years. We are talking about retrenching services, laying people off. When this fiscal impact summary was done, I assume it was done before, or the onset of coronavirus pandemic. Is that correct?
Uh, when we first started it, uh, we gave some impact, uh, calculations that were based on your administrative code that aren't currently captured in here. Um, when we first did the fiscal impact analysis, it was the beginning of the onset of COVID, which is why we had some challenges getting data from the school board. Um, so it was the beginning of COVID.
So the, the answer is that it, they weren't done in the context of the current situation.
Well, they, well, this data that's provided right here was done in the context. So we asked the questions of the school board, and they provided the response that gave the amount of kids they expected in this environment of COVID about a month ago.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And also, as you'll see in this fiscal finding, this just talks about the, um, to, uh, property tax. This does not talk about the impact fees that we're paying one time. This is not talking about the sewer fees. This isn't the full picture of impact fees, um, that are being paid from this project.
Chair?
Yes?
This is Kathy.
Hi, Kathy.
I know, if we look at this as a, uh, an outline of a budget, I know lots of times when budgets are made, you always forget things, little things that, you know, have an impact on the bottom line. So a couple of things, um, in the staff memo in 12.2, it says, deed restrictions will be placed over the open space with enforcement vested in the city of Lebanon. So there's another cost to the city that enforcement of things, that's not police enforcement. That's someone in the city has to be responsible for keeping track of things. And I noticed in, in another document that we have that was talking about the riprap, uh, entrance to the open space for the, um, wildlife quarter, it referenced a fence that needed to be removed at Timberwood. And it's like, it's been four years. Why, why hasn't that been removed? That's another one of these enforcement issues, like, is anybody doing it? Do we have the staff to do it? So that's a concern. And then there's been a great deal of, of emphasis put on using bikes instead of cars. And, you know, whether you go to Hanover, whether you go to, down to, um, I'm hearing comments that aren't very friendly. The, um, lost my train of thought, sorry. The, um, Holborn Park. We need bike racks and other improvements in this city. So I think there probably are expenses that, you know, are going to be expenses for the city or for someone that, that maybe aren't accounted for here.
Okay, fair point. All right, I'm gonna move on, um, to utilities. So streets obviously, um, are not applicable. Utilities are reviewed in the February 10th letter on page four. Um, and my read is that that's pretty straightforward, largely because as, uh, the project will be hooking up to city water and sewage. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions on that half page? All right, number five is sewage, which is not applicable for the reasons I just gave you. Number six is public safety. I know you're hot, I'm asking you to hop around a lot, but this was covered in the original fiscal study as item number six. And the applicant and their consultant reached out to senior members of fire and police. And I'm asking, do people have comments or questions on that section of the fiscal study? Was listed as municipal service cost, but it talks about the number of calls and so on and so forth. I guess another way of framing my question, are there concerns about public safety related to this project?
Chair, it's Kathy again.
Yes.
I think the same comments we had as we made last week with regard to the 343 Mount Support Road, the crosswalks and the safety and the possibility of having those push-button blinking signs so that traffic would be alerted that someone was crossing the street.
I believe that that's covered in staff comments. I saw it somewhere. Tim, can you disconfirm?
I get the, I get the two projects confused. I think I did mention, I think we do, I think we do mention something along those lines in the, somewhere. But we can, we can add that to the conditions of approval.
All right, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm going to, I know I'm dragging you all over the place. Drainage, there is a brief comment and perhaps before we get back to other materials that we don't have handy. But in the 220 letter, again, on page four, there is a paragraph that talks about stormwater management. But Tim and Mike like to say that this is sort of like the wetlands portion. It's something that we should ask a applicant to pull together for us.
Well, well, no, I think, I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate to ask the applicant tonight about that. It's not, it's not necessarily a wetland issue. It's how does the, how does the, how does the drainage function on site?
All right, let's do that. I agree. So I'll turn that over to the applicant.
Yeah, hi, it's Dave Fensdemacher again. And just a, an overview of the drainage, it means all in the drainage report. The drainage report was reviewed by a peer reviewer. We have additional comments from Brian Vincent. But the overall intent of the drainage is to provide curbing along the the paved areas of the site to collecting stormwater through catch basins to a series of closed pipe drainage systems, which ultimately brings it to these, the subsurface filter systems, which provide detention and treatment. And then that will provide quality and quantity control. This has all been submitted to DES for their alteration of terrain permit application. They've had some minor comments, but we're, we'll be updating our plans and our study to reflect that. And that will be sent back to Brian as well as we implement his changes. But overall, it's the mitigate, we're mitigating everything on site through the use of these sort of large underground treatment structures.
Brian, do you have any comments to add to that?
I think Brian in the chat said he lost his audio.
Unfortunately. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, this is David Brooks. Brian was, he was going to try to hang up and dial back in perhaps. Because yeah, as, as was just mentioned, he couldn't hear.
That's unfortunate. We lost Tim. Tim or David, I'm putting you on the spot, I know, but do we wait until the next meeting for Brian to comment on the drainage portion? Are you aware of that at this point in time, like you put it that way, that the board should be aware of?
I, I think his comments, I, I don't know. But I, I, I know he has submitted comments to, to on the project as a whole. I don't know where he stands specifically with respect to the drainage study. So I'm sorry, I don't have an answer.
That's fine, that's fair. So in any event, we'll be coming back to that at the next meeting, just to wrap up.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
Could we ask the applicant two things? I know the city has spent multi-millions of dollars in separating their old sewer system so that the stormwater is separate. Where is this stormwater that's collected from this site ultimately being discharged? Is it through a separate stormwater piping system and where does that lead?
Yeah, it's not connected to the sewer system at all. It will flow along some swales on the west side of Mount Support and it culverts to the other side. And then there's a larger wetland area, I think, just west of 120 that's over there. So nothing, nothing's in the piped system with the city. And the sewer is going to be in a, a new extension for, for the sewer discharge.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've gone as far as we can on that. And then the last part of this requirement is the fiscal impact, which I believe we've already discussed unless somebody else has a question or comment on it. All right, I'm going to close the discussion about the impact study, noting that we need to revisit item B1 at our next meeting. And now I will turn it over, I guess, to staff to start the discussion on traffic.
David.
It is, it is unfortunate that we've lost Mr. Vincent. Yes, so as Tim mentioned earlier in the meeting, we do now have the traffic studies for all four projects, even though one of them hasn't submitted a formal application yet. So we have been able to extract the data relative to the Mount Support La Haye Drive intersection. And we've been taking a very close look at that, that particular intersection and how these four projects impacted. We've been looking at what is the traffic today? What is each project, what is the background growth anticipated to be from just both from other projects that have already been approved in the vicinity as well as just general background growth of traffic over time? And then what is each project expected to generate and add to this particular intersection, both in AM and PM? And I believe as Mr. Plord has pointed out on behalf of the applicant, none of these projects by themselves sort of trip any triggers. But when you add them all up together, they definitely do add as much as 25 or more percent of, of trips through that one particular intersection. So it is very much, I, I think it is very appropriate to continue to work with the applicants and the city to arrive at some improvements that might be appropriate for that La Haye Drive and Mounts, and Mount Support Road intersection. And we're, we're still putting together and crunching the numbers as to exactly the, the trip generation and the relative share of each project in terms of trips through that intersection and then what the city is going to be responsible for, given that the intersection is in a, is in a near failing position right now. It's a, it's a level of service E at the moment. So we are, we're continuing to work on that, that the, on, as a side note, the city's capital improvement project, budgeting project, process has begun and submissions have been made relative to this particular intersection with the idea that these, these applicants will be helping to contribute towards that project. And I believe, I, I hope Mr. Vincent is back on and may be able to add to that discussion.
Chair, this is Brian. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am back. Yeah, the, the only amendment I would make to David's comments is the AM. Current intersection, the AM is a C, not an E. The PM is an E.
So in summary, this sounds like it'll go on for a while. It may be that there is no nothing specific that we can act on. Should we get to the point of deciding on this applicant in our next meeting? Is that a fair statement?
Again, this is David. I, I hope not. I would like to think as we crunch the numbers and then get back in touch with the applicants, we would be able to arrive at a, at a percentage to which each applicant is responsible and then be able to provide that to the board.
But you'd also need to provide that to council, wouldn't you? The city is going to be on the hook for part of it.
Uh, not.
I, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Anticipate.
Right.
So, so we don't know where we'll stand. All right, but this is moving ahead. So board members, do you have questions for staff in regard to this issue?
Chair Garland.
All right, yes, yes.
Monroe here. It's a trap to traffic things, not necessarily related to the report. But traffic, I found in our staff memorandum the reference to the flashing pedestrian crossing beacons. And it's in our, our memo, the packet that was sent out for tonight's meeting, May 18. It's on page seven of 18. And it's on the very bottom of the page in 13.13 pedestrian walks and bicycle paths. So that was, that is something that I certainly support. And I hope that, that other board members also support it. And the other issue that's related occurred to me about not having, in this proposal, not having sidewalks proposed for the, for the west side of Mount Support. And my question would be that that it's, that in the same way that we look at the capacities of the roads, I'm thinking about the capacity of the sidewalk. And as I occasionally go up Mount Support these days in the time of isolation, I'm seeing that the sidewalk that's on the east side is being used by mothers with children in strollers, joggers and pet walkers. And I'm, I've, I've seen out in, in Oregon where they, I've been going out there visiting family for 16 years now. And I see how they indeed have made sidewalks to nowhere. That now, when I go out, they are connecting up. And so I am thinking that we should be doing the same thing. We should be making each of the projects on the east side of, of Mount Support also make sidewalks that would seem for now to be going nowhere. But at the rate we're having applications come in for Mount Support, it's not going to take terribly long before our little, our little row of dominos is going to add up. So that's just an idea that it occurred to me while I was reading about traffic and thinking, well, but there's pedestrian traffic as well. That's my idea.
Thank you for that, Joan. All right, I think we've closed out traffic, obviously a lot more to come. So now, fortunately, we seem to be moving well ahead with our agenda. Now I'm going to ask Tim to review the conditional use permit discussion, which is on page 13, page 12 of the staff memorandum that we received for this meeting. Now, again, we're not making any decisions, just want to go through it, make sure everybody is clear as to what is at stake here and have an opportunity to ask any questions. Tim, may I turn it over to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just point out that, again, the criteria that the planning board needs to evaluate in, in determining whether or not to grant 125% of the amount of minimum required parking instead of, or in addition to the 120% maximum that's permitted without any sort of special approval. The criteria the board needs to focus on is, is found in 6073B2A through D of the zoning ordinance. And it's, it's copied and pasted into the staff memo on, on page 12. I would say D is, is not, is not applicable here. It's more of a, a prohibition against, against permitting anything, any amount of parking that exceeds 150% of the minimum requirement. That's not, that doesn't apply here. 125% is what's requested. But it's the other three criteria that the, that the board will have to, will have to look at and determine whether or not the applicant has, has met the burden, satisfying that criteria. They have addressed 6073B2 in a letter that was provided with their original submission dated February 10th, 2020.
So when we go to vote on this, presumably in our June meeting, will we need to vote on each of these points or just on the overall request?
I, I would, I would suggest just the overall request.
All right, that's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear. Do I have questions from the board? Members? All right, I'm going to take that as no and that this request for conditional use permit is clear in its intent and how we need to decide on it at the next meeting. And then much longer, just because there are many more of them, section is waiver request. Again, Tim, I don't know if you want to handle this as subdivision regulations first and afterwards. Somebody's got their microphone on that you might not want to. Through hearing size and other whispers, but it's up to you. Tim, are you back with me?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair. I would, I would just recommend that we, we ask the applicant to quickly walk us through the application for waivers.
So for the subdivision or the site?
In, in the application, the, the four-page application that was included with the staff memorandum for tonight's agenda packet, they go in order as, as they appear in the staff memo, subdivision regulations first, then the site plan review regulations.
All right, does everybody have? So this is the city of Lebanon and then applications for waivers document, correct, Tim?
Exactly, yes.
All right, so could I ask the applicant to walk us through now? Section 10.2 we've dealt with and 7.2, right? So we can skip the first two?
Yeah, we should, we should be on 10.4.8.
We're on page two of two.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll go over these quickly. And again, I, I think we've, through the other projects we've worked on, these are more like partial waivers versus, you know, full waivers. But this really has to relate to the size of the project and then the additional 200 feet beyond our project and just the overall scope of those items and just.
Those items and just really focusing on the items that are related to the project and what we'd be connecting to in the roadway. So ten point four. A one G. Um, so that relates to the location of existing structures, roads, easements and trails located on the property. And within two hundred feet of the property. So um we're showing all the existing structures. Um, um, within the site. Um, there are no easements, but the roads we're showing Mount Sport Road. And the trails, what we don't do is we don't carry the trails two hundred feet into, um, you know, the the surrounding properties. We are significantly cut far back from those back property lines as they are. So. You know, we're not even within two hundred feet of the additional two hundred feet that's required. So we're just looking to. Uh, limit for the purposes of the subdivision plan, um, what we're showing for structures. And trails and roads within two hundred feet of the property. And I think I, if it makes sense, I'll just run through these first three because they're all really related. Um, and then H relates to existing natural features. Uh, permanent intermittent in water courses, marshes, lakes, uh flood plains, wetlands, outcrops, all within two hundred feet of the property. Um, and plan shall indicate approximate limits of clearing. For the development and those natural features that are to be removed, retained and altered. So what we do, we show what's going to get removed. We show the limits. We show what's um getting retained. What we don't do is carry the two hundred feet beyond our property into the uh to the west. And then um for I and the same one, this one relates to. Existing water and wastewater mains, culverts and drains. Uh, within two hundred feet. So we do show the important ones that we're tying into and we're showing. Mount Support all along our frontage. It's just the the two hundred feet in either direction. So those are kind of grouped together with. You know, we're showing a significant amount of uh information on these plans already and we're dealing with, you know. Um, maybe a third of the site or quarter of the site that we're actually developing and just trying to limit the amount of information beyond. The two, beyond the prop, two hundred feet beyond the property line for that.
All right, can I stop you there? Again, board members, the the point this evening is not to make a decision, but to go through the debate, questions, whatever. So that at the next meeting, we can go through these. Uh, in terms of decision-making in a very expedited manner. So does anybody have questions on these three or criticism, comments, whatever?
Bruce, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, I do have, I I guess it's a question and maybe actually uh to Dave, David and Tim. But, you know, I understand why the applicant would want to have waivers on these because they're two hundred feet outside of their property. On the other hand, if. Uh, if we have a requirement that the this is done, what on others, why would we not have this also done on them? I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we would give a waiver to something that the city requires. On properties that are being developed, especially if these are large properties like the ones being proposed. What would make that different than somebody else? You know, applicant B uh wanting to build a property and they would have to do a two hundred, uh, you know, the. These uh utilities or the other things that are within two hundred feet of their property. So David or Tim, why?
Well, I, this is Tim. I, the um. The the why is is dependent on whether or not, or I I should say. Whether or not the board grants a waiver depends on whether the board feels that the requirements in seven, section seven point one A or B have been met. And so any, any aspect of the subdivision regulations can be waived. Um, upon or uh, sorry, we're we're doing uh, we're doing subdivision at the moment. Um, any aspect of the subdivision regulations can be waived uh upon request of the applicant, uh provided that they can uh demonstrate. Uh, that they've met the applicable criteria. Um. And so that's up to the board to decide whether or not there is uh unnecessary hardship uh under uh criteria A. Uh, or whether uh there is, there are um. Specific circumstances uh relative to the particular proposal. That indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. So that's, that's the general answer to the question. Um, there are, in other words, there are specific criteria that have to be met. It's not just a an arbit- it's not supposed to be an arbitrary decision of the planning board. It's supposed to be. Based on whether or not one or two of those waiver criteria have been satisfied. Um. Uh, these criteria in particular um are are, it's not uncommon for applicants uh to request waivers. From those requirements. If 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 there's a, if there's a feeling among the board members that that's. Important information to have that that uh is, you know, would weigh upon your. Your analysis or evaluation of 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 the overall overall request, then by all means it can be. Uh, it 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 probably shouldn't be granted, uh unless, again, otherwise the the applicant has demonstrated uh compliance with uh one of those waiver criteria. So. I I I I'm not sure I'm directly specifically answering your question, giving you more generalities, but um. I I don't, I don't know. David Brooks, did you have anything to add?
Yes, the oh, I think that was a very good answer. I think the, generally speaking, the regulations are written to cover. Any possible application in any part of the community. Um, a- and they they are generally designed to make sure that the board has enough information to make an informed decision. However, there may be specific instances for any given application. Uh, for which some piece of information isn't really. Critical to to whether you can make an informed decision. Uh, you know, what might be within two hundred feet of the west side of this property, for exa- for instance. Um, may or may not be relevant because they're not, they're not going that far west with their proposed project. Um, and so what might be over there within a couple hundred feet may or may not be relevant. Those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of uh. Decisions that you have to make. Again, Tim, Tim cited the section that they can, they can ask for any waiver, a- almost any waiver. Uh, of the regulations, but they need to justify why they're asking. And if the board agrees and and doesn't feel that that some piece of information is is essential to your review and to your understanding of how the property fits in its neighborhood. Uh, then you you may feel uh able to grant that. And if you feel otherwise, then you you shouldn't vote to to approve it.
Okay, well, let me, let me give one point that uh, as you've been explaining this and as I've been thinking about it further, uh, I wonder. How this would fit in. So earlier in the discussion, we were hearing about groundwater and the way in which the groundwater would be removed from the site. And it would be funneled through uh new stormwater drains that would go, from what I understood. Under Mount Support over to the uh, what would be, I guess, the east side of the um. Of the road and down the way to a a um. Uh, wetlands area that was a large wetlands area. If we, I, now, I personally didn't know that that's the way they were going to be taking care of the groundwater situation. And that that would be flowing into a wetlands. And I'm wondering what the impact of that wetlands is from the groundwater that's being uh taken off of this uh, this particular site. So. If I didn't, if if they weren't required to show the wetlands around that area, I don't know that any of the rest of us would have, except perhaps Joan. Those were almost all wetlands throughout the the city located, uh, that that would be the case. So I'm trying to figure out. If we exempt somebody from regulations that are there, how we can be sure that we have all the information that we need. To know that we're making a proper decision on um on granting the approval of these.
Somebody's printer is making noise. I can't hear.
No, that's my old computer that's starting to wheeze. We call her Wheezy. I apologize for that. I'll go back on mute now that I've had my say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Chair.
Yes, I have.
When I read the first um waiver request. It lists easements, trails that are located on the property and within two hundred feet of the property. Those are two different things. And as you read through all the others, those little ellipses in there leave out the on the property. And just put the end of the sentence within two hundred feet of the property. And I think with regard to some of these requests. We wouldn't want to waive depicting them on the property. We might be willing to consider, for some of them anyway, waiving their. Uh, showing up within two hundred feet of the property. But I had previously requested showing ponds. And trails. Uh, on the property and since. A lot of emphasis has been put on the fact that people could be using these trails to access the hospital. I think showing the trails within two hundred feet of the property is is not an outrageous request because the applicant has. Stressed their importance. So I'm, I would like to see, I know the general outline of the wetlands is. It is depicted, but I would like to see where the pond is and where the trails are. Um, and I understand Tom's request for um. The way the water is traveling to the eastern wetlands.
Um, I must admit that I missed the point about on the property. I was focused on the two hundred feet.
But you see, it it, it is part of the waiver request. It's just not written in each of the requests, but it it's assumed to be there, right?
It is assumed. Yes, I was certainly.
I mean, that's what the three little dots mean. It means something's missing and it's on the property that's missing, I think.
And that's, yeah, so this is Dave Fensmark again. That's, that's how I I hope to um communicate that when we started this, is that we do have all the information. On the fifty-four acres. We have the ponds, we have the the wetlands, we have the trails. Um. We, and that's why there's a little, there's a little gray area here. We're only looking for the waiver request for the pieces that. You know, as David mentioned, if we're two hundred feet from our property line, showing something to the west, two hundred feet. Um, doesn't really um. Impact the 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 review of this area, or if we're, you know, hundreds of feet, thousands of feet from the western. One showing something two hundred feet beyond that.
Um, except perhaps uh in in one person's um. Opinion, the wetlands and and I'm saying with the trails, it would. Would be helpful.
But I I think Kathy and Tom were looking for. Different maps, one that shows the connection into the rails and how they get to the hospital. Um, and two, this whole issue of stormwater and the wetlands that they will be going into, which came up tonight. All right, again, we're not here to decide on this. I'm going to ask that we continue with this review. Can the applicant go back to? The next.
Chair Garland. Chair Garland.
Yes.
Oh, here.
Yep.
Row here. Um, I just wanted to add that. Um. That, in my mind, two hundred and feet is not an excessive amount. At all to look at beyond the property. Um, the. In ter- in terms of wildlife travel, in terms of water, the distance that water travels. Um. That that two hundred feet is a is a really small amount. It it seems minimal and. The, according to the Wildlife Corps' um study that was done. It was recommended that the width of the wildlife corridor should be three hundred and seventy-five feet. So I would like to see. From the distance from the buildings on the southern boundary and the the constructions, meaning the the um. Pavement, I'd like to, I would like to see what was two hundred feet beyond. Um. The area, you know, what's beyond the the um, the area where the border is. So. Uh, and the same for the trails. I'd like to see how far to the west it takes before you connect to the north-south trail. And I I also think that it's an extremely good point about the large wetland that's to the east. It's the one that you see when you drive in on. I always forget which one it is, whether it's Lahar or the the northern entrance. Um, where you see, you know, and and that wetland goes basically parallel all along Route one twenty. Um, and it it's some of it is clearly of uh excellent, high-quality wetlands. So I think two hundred feet is a small amount to ask for.
But I I would suggest that we need. We needed this question on. That subject with a map that shows how the two uh connect. The two hundred feet won't get you there.
Right, but I would think that um it would. I would think there would might be a note somewhere on the on the in, uh, somewhere in the information that that reveals that because that's a really important. Piece to know where, you know, where the drainage is going.
Does it cross on the Braverman property? Does it cross through Timberwood? Does it, you know, it would, we should know where all that water is.
Correct. No, I agree, I agree. But that's well beyond the two hundred feet. So. We didn't finish up on drainage tonight.
Okay.
We need to come back to that. So please take a note. All right, I'm just going to keep moving on because we're not making a decision tonight and the.
Mr. Chair.
Hurry, hearing your reservation. Yes, Tim.
Sure, this is Tim. Thank you. Um, I I do think it's, it's a little tricky. I I think the, to the extent that. The board members would like additional information. And I think this is what's, what you've been discussing, but if if there's specific, specific information that you would like. With respect to these waiver requests prior to the next meeting, that that should be made as clear as possible to the applicant tonight so that they can provide that information to you. Um, some of it, some of the information that you may need could possibly be made a condition of approval. Um, uh, but again, to the extent that you need it before making a decision, we should try and make that as clear as possible to the applicant. I I think that. Um, it we, you aren't making a decision tonight. On the other hand, um, with some of these, if if you were. If there was consensus that it it's, it's not something the board is inclined to grant. I I think you could, I I think that should be made clear too to the applicant so that they can respond appropriately. It's to the extent that it's possible.
Well, I I hear you, but. We've got half an hour left and I'm desperate to get to the public. So I'm going to ask the applicant to take notes of two more maps that I don't think we have. One is a map that details the connection into the trails. And two is the map that shows the discharge into the uh wetland. I think that that would help the board enormously.
Chair Garland, do we need a straw vote, vote, or is that adequate?
I think that's adequate. I'm just asking, I'm sure that the. Applicant will wish to get their waivers approved and will. Therefore be motivated to respond to this. Does anybody else have a request for additional map? All right, so let's move on to the next three.
Chair, Chair Garland.
Yes.
In considering how long it it takes us to do these and we're not going to decide tonight, is there any chance that we can move to the public? I don't know when we last heard the public.
Well, that's why I want to go through these really quickly now.
I'll, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so this is Dave again, like, because these other ones are paired together to um ten four, C two A and C two B. And again, this is not a waiver that we don't want to do something. It is that it requires the cost estimates for the off-site improvements. And at this point. I'm still negotiating with uh AT and still working with DPW on the appropriate crossings and bus shelter locations. We just don't have those plans. We just don't have the final design for those to give a cost estimate for. But if there was a condition that we could provide those. Once they're they're agreed upon, um. or whatever, whatever, we need to, if there's a, what's the word I'm looking for? Some sort of escrow or something that's needed? That's something we can talk about in the conditions. But for the purposes of this, we're just asking for a waiver to provide that at this point, the, the two cost estimates.
Fair enough.
Okay. And then the site plan ones, I'll, again, we won't get into details because this is very similar to the subdivision plans and really relates to the, you know, within 200 feet. The first three are all related to the 200 feet. The other one is if we're using the existing trees and we're using a large mass of trees, the regulations require that we need to measure, field measure a certain amount of them within 25 feet of the disturbed area where, you know, we're more than meeting the perimeter landscaping. So I'm just looking to a waiver to provide this. I think this would be, you know, more appropriate if someone's using one or two trees to supplement a plan versus us being surrounded by the woods. But we can, we can discuss that. And then as we move on, the parking area, where the landscape shall have a minimum eight-foot width, setting the low, the row of the parking spaces with deciduous trees for shade. What we did is we wanted to really minimize the impacts. And so we've, we've, we've not provided that buffer, but we've provided that buffer on the perimeter and then supplemented instead of the, the eight-feet length, we've provided, you know, sufficient islands to provide the, the appropriate shading. And then it sounds like the sidewalks along the frontage is something that we'll provide a response to anyway, based on Ms. Monroe's previous comments. The fire access, this is one that, just based on the topography and the wetlands in the middle. We did review this multiple times with the fire department and just, they felt they had adequate access, access to the buildings for fire protection at the buildings now. And then 8.1, I think Tim suggested, discussed before, and that's related to the temporary CO so that we can open the clubhouse for leasing purposes. So that's my, my two-minute overview so that we can get to public, but happy to discuss any of these if you think it's.
That was very helpful. Well, thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, this is Sarah Welsh. I appreciate that, Mr. Fenstermark. I just want to verify something. Under 65B4, I don't understand, are you going to be supplying sidewalks along the street frontage, i.e. on the road? Because there's no sidewalks there now. Or are you talking about within the, the project?
No, we're asking for a waiver because there's a, a multi-use path on the east side of Mount Support. I think it's eight to 10 feet wide. It's protected by a curb. It's protected by a landscape strip. And that we'd like to minimize the amount of pavement out there. Now, it would have additional wetland impacts and overall environmental impacts that we feel that it's sufficient to provide access from our site to the, the already existing larger sidewalk system that's out there.
Well, how are they going to get from the left-hand side, the western side of Mount Support Road over to the right-hand side, crossing over what's going to be the busiest road in, in all of Grafton County, once all these projects get built? Don't you think having a sidewalk that will give them a place to stand in order to make sure they can cross over to where the bus stop is, which is not directly opposite your entrance? Is that not correct? Yes, I understand you're going to have your bus, your private shuttle go into the property. But if somebody would like to take advanced transit, how are they going to get across to the east side of Mount Support Road heading north without a sidewalk which to delineate where the road is? Does that make sense? Am I making?
Well, I think what we're doing, we're bringing the, everyone from our property to a single crossing point. And there's already been comments from staff about implementing the flashing crossing signs. So our, our, we're preparing to provide a safe crossing.
Okay.
Warnings there. I think that actually is probably better off than having the two, two sidewalks on either side. Because this actually provides a one single crossing point for better safety.
You can get all of your residents to cross over there.
Well, it's the only way they can get to the, to Mount Support is through, but we have one sidewalk that goes out.
Okay.
Okay, I think I'm going to end this part of our discussions and finally get to the public. I don't know how many people are online from the public. Those of you who are there, I thank you for your patience. We did hear from the chair of the Conservation Committee. So if you were still there, I will ask you to go first.
Yes, I'm still here. I'm Aaron Stojman, Chair of the Conservation Committee. The Conservation Committee had a meeting about this project on March 12. And I submitted a memo of understanding, at least a memo of suggestions, the next day. The Conservation Committee does not decide or makes decisions about these things. So the one thing we did was we reviewed the application and waived our right to intervene. That doesn't mean that we don't have suggestions. And let me just quote from my letter. We're very concerned about the extraordinary amount of parking spaces. So we recommend that, that be as much as possible reduced, particularly in the circumferential parking lots. Or use covert parking spaces somewhere under the buildings. Maybe sacrifice one of the floors. The other thing we, I, I didn't mention that is more and more people will use electrical cars. Will there be charging stations? More and more people will use electric bikes or plane bikes to get around, particularly since these are so short, close to the hospital and Santera. Other suggestion would be to, to limit lighting so that, that either goes by on demand. So if a parking lot is not used, the lights go out after five minutes. If somebody enters the parking lot, the, the, the lights go on again, et cetera. Another issue would be solar panels, at least on the roofs of these flat buildings or otherwise over the parking spots. I've, I've seen many spots during my travels where the parking spots are used for solar panels. Another big concern the Conservation Committee has is wildlife corridors. They're very limited on this plan. And they're really dealing with two roads, Route 120 and Mount Support Road, which animals have to cross. Nobody keeps to the speed limit, so speed bumps might be appropriate. But we would highly recommend that with this development and the neighboring development to the south coming up soon too, and one across the street, that wildlife corridors be very carefully considered. Then the coordination of all these developments is extremely important. I think you're aware of all the issues, particularly with traffic studies. Where once, one study regarding one development will add traffic, the next development will add traffic and suddenly we're really at a bottleneck traffic situation. Of course, sidewalks and bicycle paths are extremely important for these young students who are going to use this. And last but not least, conservation. The site encompasses 53 acres, of which 18 are designated for buildings and parking lots. The Conservation Committee recommended that the current conservation of the remaining 35 acres be made permanent so that there's no later in the development changing available space. And the, the Michaels will say, well, we got that space. We need another two towers to be built there for students so that it gets permanently preserved, conserved. That probably will need an official conservation easement. Let me see what else. Well, I admire all your people's endurance with all these meetings. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Oldman. I appreciate that. Joan, you were curious as to what the commission debated. Your opportunity to ask Mr. Oldman.
All I would say is thank you very much, Dr. Oatman. I still say I would, I would really like it in the future if we could have copies of the, of the actual minutes. And with everything online and, and so easily done through e-communicating, I, I, I know it's not necessarily your power to do that, but I throw that idea out there that I appreciate the, the summaries, but I also think that a lot of, a lot of tidbits of knowledge that, that goes into the advice would also be very helpful and be very educational for us. But thank you, Dr. Oatman, for your attendance.
Reply on that. The meetings are public and the minutes are available online within a week or so, maybe two weeks. Just sit inside and read the minutes.
And this is Tim. The applicant wasn't required to go to the Conservation Commission or, or before they went to the planning board. So if and when the applicant goes before the Conservation Commission, before they go to the planning board, then we'd be happy to provide the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have other persons from the public who would like to speak? All right, I don't hear anyone else. We now have 16 minutes left. I know we have at least other business and entertainment. So I'm just going to ask the board members, do you have anything else that you'd like to come back on and either continue the discussion or other new points in the very brief time that we have remaining? Everybody just exhausted.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Corwin again. I, I have a, a general question for the board. Following up on Ms. Romano's suggestion about placing a condition of approval on the project, limiting or I guess excluding undergraduates from, from renting one of the units at the property. Is there, I, I think David, David mentioned that there, there's certainly legal risk that is, is a ten, would, would be attendant to imposing such a condition on the property. I think there's also a very significant enforcement issue. It's, it's not clear at all how that, that condition would, would, would be enforced. And so before we consult legal counsel as to specifically, consult legal counsel specifically as to the propriety of imposing this, this type of condition. I just wanted to get a sense, is there, is that, is that something that the, the board in general is interested in, in pursuing?
Mr. Chair and Tim, this is Laurel St. Davis.
Yes, Laurel.
Yes, it's something that I would be interested in pursuing. And I would also be interested in asking the applicant and/or Dartmouth if they would be willing to share a copy of the agreement between them. Because as we, the more we discuss this, the more it, it just occurs to me that we don't know of whom we're asking what. And, and I, I also have a question, if I may, of, of Michaels. I understand that you are very experienced in building these types of housing. Have, do you have experience in building student housing, whether it's graduate or undergraduate in a municipality other than the municipality in which the campus proper is located?
I believe we do.
If you could, if you could provide some examples of that at our next meeting, that would be really helpful to me.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. Yes, again, just, just a point of clarification. At, at a minimum, it, it, it is clear that, that the property owner is always responsible. They cannot contract away their responsibility for, for, for being, being liable and responsible for what, for what the land's approval requires or permits. So at a minimum, it is always the property owner. There's no question about that. It could, it, it may also be, it may also be the operator or the tenant, but it is always at least the property owner.
Chair, this is Kathy. I, I had no intention of suggesting something that would put the city in legal jeopardy. But I do think that looking at a housing project that is meant to house adults who are graduate students is different from trying to police an undergraduate student complex with 600 and some people. And I, I was hoping that there was some way that we could be protected from, you know, being the location of a large number of undergraduate students. I think that's an entirely different makeup of a complex in terms of responsibilities and experience and everything than a graduate student housing. And I know that we've heard several times that the intention is to be graduate student, but I was just researching whether there was any way to, you know, carve that in stone.
I think the answer is no. I've not heard anything from staff.
Right, but I, I mean, I've said this before. In terms of how the priority lease-up is working, it's going to go from graduate students to Dartmouth Hitchcock employees to Dartmouth College employees. By the time it'll come to open leasing for undergraduates, there won't be any units left because of the availability of these affordable units. It's a de facto reality. And the demand studies that we've seen for how much in need the college is for undergraduate students, I can also share that in markets, as a private owner and manager of student housing, we have no incentive to let our projects go awry to cause any issues for the municipalities we work in. Our, our goal is to have a successful, attractive, well-managed property. We'll have onsite management facilities. We'll be hiring locally to do that. So I understand where your concerns are. And I will provide you examples of working in municipalities outside of where the college is located. But, you know, our success is your success. And we have no, we have no intention of going anywhere. We plan on being here and we plan on having a well-managed property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, David.
This is David Brooks. May I ask a question or two of, of the applicants?
Please.
Either Ms. Wigan or Mr. Justinski. Is there, maybe Mr. Justinski, is there an obligation at Dartmouth for freshmen to live on campus?
This is Dan Justinski, Director of Real Estate, Dartmouth. You know, although the real estate office primarily provides housing for graduate students and faculty and staff, I'm not aware of all the requirements for how undergraduates are. So I'm not, I'm not able to answer that. I can research it and get that answer back to you.
David, this is Laurel St. Davis. And I worked at Dartmouth for two decades. And my understanding is that there absolutely is a requirement that first-year students live on campus.
Okay, but it's, but I, I guess maybe Mr. Justinski can follow up and, and if it applies to freshmen, but maybe not sophomores. I, I wonder if that helps address Ms. Romano's concern or stated comments and questions. My other question again is maybe more for Mr. Justinski. Would Dartmouth security staff have any role on this property? Given that it's college property, but it's not at Hanover? Would, would they have any enforcement role or, or security role to play here?
Thank you for the question. Our intention is that, that this is not a Dartmouth Safety and Security Thank you for the question. Our intention is that that this is not a Dartmouth safety and security property for patrolling. This is City Eleven and and the the proper management by Michaels and the and the control of the tenancy. So it it is not expected to be a safety and security rolling place on that one.
Thank you.
All right, I'm I'm gonna bring this, I think we've had a very fruitful discussion this evening. I thank the applicant. I think the board members. I'm gonna bring this to a close. And then go back to our agenda because we have a very few minutes remaining.
You should, you should have a motion.
I need a motion to continue this. You're absolutely right. I need a motion to continue this until the June eighth meeting. Thank you for that, Tim.
So moved, Mr. Chair. This is Laurel Davis.
Thank you, Laurel. Thank you, Tom. So is any discussion? So I, I am in favor. Jim?
Counselor Winnie is in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel is in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Sarah?
Sarah votes yes.
And Tom?
Tom is in favor.
So that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, does anyone have have any other business? Staff, do you have any other business?
Not, not me, not Tim.
Mr. Chair, we, we do have some vacancies on various boards and committees. We could either take that up tonight. I know Mr. Martz has has put his name into the hat. Or we can save that for next week's meeting when you cover board, board and committee reports.
Why don't we save it for next week? Those that, two, are there any others? I know Tom has volunteered for two subcommittees. So maybe David, if you have it handy, could remind members what other positions are still. We might get a volunteer by next week.
Yep. So Mr. Mr. Martz has has put his name in for Ped and Bike Committee, Ped and Bike Advisory Committee, also for the Capital Improvement Program Subcommittee and the Steering Committee for the Implementation of the Master Plan. The remaining vacancy is with the Heritage Commission.
So if any member is interested, I encourage you to contact David or Tim during the week, and we'll be more than happy to get you on the Heritage Commission. All right, with that, I will ask a member for a motion to adjourn.
Counselor Winnie, move to adjourn.
I heard first.
Second by Monroe.
Second by Joan. Any discussion? So I am in favor. Jim?
Yes, Counselor Winnie votes yes.
Joan?
Both yes.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Sarah?
Sarah votes yes.
And Tom?
Tom votes yes.
All right, that's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Good night, Laurel.
Good night.
Good night.
Safe travels home.